I now call the December 5th, 2016 regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your wet yes switch? Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Councilman Miller.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the November 15th, 2016, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on November 23rd, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Haley, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the December 6th, 2016 bills and claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
In October, a person visiting our community began choking. Visitor had been driving alone and pulled off the road to see if the obstruction could be cleared. Traffic supervisor Monica De Leon was in the area and stopped to see if she could assist. Fortunately, her assistance and a drink of water cleared up the issue. But we can imagine how this might have turned out should Monica had not been observant or willing to help. The visitor sincerely appreciated the help and contacted city staff to be sure that Monica's efforts were recognized. Monica, on behalf of the City Council, I thank you for your efforts and I would very much like to present to you a certificate of commendation. Your readiness to help a stranger in need is very much applauded.
Thank you.
Do you like any words?
I just want to, I truly appreciate this and it just touches my heart that somebody reached out to thank me for the kindness.
Well, thank you for actually stepping in and getting involved and caring. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action: by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes whereas other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify local law whereas resolutions and minute action items provide for the council to carry out its business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. There is a process for the public as well as council members to remove a title from consent. Council will now consider establishing the schedule of future public hearings which are held for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor licenses, transactions, and the passing of the budget and zone changes. Public hearings also require public notice via publication in the newspaper. Please read the consent agenda title.
Established December 20th, 2016, as the public hearing date for consideration of a vacation and replat creating the Fairgrounds Home Edition, generally located north of Guadalajara Mexican Restaurant on Fairgrounds Road.
The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing date just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kathy, I mean Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now hold previously scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to either speak in for or in opposition to the issue and then council will discuss the issue and take action if necessary. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 29 from Mountain West Sales Incorporated to Double C Hospitality, doing business as Gallus Liquor Mart. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy Belser to V.H. McDonald, the city manager, dated December 6th, 2016. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated November 21st, 2016. Exhibit number three, that document being the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated November 9th, 2016. And exhibit number four, that document being the actual liquor license application as filed with the city on October 13th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report please.
Your Honor, an application has been received for a transfer of ownership for retail liquor license number 29 from Mountain West Sales Incorporated, doing business as Gallus Liquor Mart located at 748 East Yellowstone Street to Double C Hospitality LLC, doing business as Gallus Liquor Mart located at 748 East Yellowstone. In that the Gallus Liquor Mart's had a drive-up window since 1979, has been operating. The ordinance that council passed in 2006 that prohibited and put some limitations on liquor licenses don't apply. This drive-up window been grandfathered in and so it has no application, it has no relevance in this transfer of ownership. The publications that have been required to be made have been made and it's before you tonight to consider.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of retail liquor license number 29 to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in favor of the transfer of liquor license number 29. Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of retail liquor license number 29 to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak either for or against the transfer of retail liquor license number 29, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 29.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Okay. All right. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Consideration of the next item will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a council-initiated zone change of multiple properties located in the Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Street Corridor.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the consent ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Consideration of the next items will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinances on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of Lot 1 of lots 1 through 10 of Eastford Heights 3 located at 2300 East 15th Street in the city of Casper, Wyoming. An ordinance approving a zone change of North Casper Edition Block 22, lots 199 through 200 and tract adjacent to Lot 200 located at 702 North Jefferson Street in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the consent ordinances just read.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for a change order for the North Platte Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Corrosion Control Facility Project. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services with CH2M Hill Engineers for the design of the North Platte Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Corrosion Control Facility Project Number 1454.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Johnson. City Manager, your report please.
Your Honor, CH2M Hill Engineers is currently under contract for design and construction administration services for the corrosion, the NPSSI Corrosion Control Facility Project Number 1454. The completed project will mitigate corrosion within a large concrete sanitary sewer pipeline downstream of the Indian Paintbrush Lift Station. It's the main line and quite a large line and we need to work on corrosion. The building and electrical installations for the projects were originally designed to meet the International Energy Code but this code was later deemed unnecessary for the project and the facility can be redesigned to meet the less stringent International Electric Code. It is estimated the redesigned facility will save $100,000 to $150,000 in construction costs. C2H-M Hill has provided a fee of $33,560 for the revised design so the net savings is considerable in the project. And that will redesign the building and additional electric services for the project. The engineering, the City of Casper Engineering Office has reviewed CH2M Hill's proposal and finds it in order. And Andrew Beamer is here to provide some more details or ask questions if you'd like to hear from him.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Andrew Beamer. Just so you can remind everybody, this is an overbuilt sewer collector. It was projected that the west side, Paradise Valley included, it was going to grow like gangbusters and we overbuilt the sewer.
Your Honor, that was probably designed and built in the late 70s, early 80s during the boom years right before the crash and it was overbuilt and the low flows does create problems for us with hydrogen sulfide. And this project is injecting ferris chloride into the system to mitigate those effects but the cost savings during construction are really realized. The original design called for two blocks, two courses of block wall. This relaxed standard allows us to go to one course of block wall. So you, right there are the cost savings. And then a domino effect, reduced foundation and foundation slab, roof choice, insulation, roofing. It all adds up to, we estimate, a savings in construction costs of $100,000 to $150,000. It's currently under, under contract. 71 Construction is currently working on this project.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So Andrew, just for people's information, what would happen if we didn't put this treatment system in place over time?
If we didn't put this treatment system in over time, we would have to be replacing portions of this interceptor sewer. I mean, so we can spend some money now, rather, I consider it an nominal amount versus having to actually dig up and replace miles upon miles of 36-inch RCP sanitary sewer interceptor main.
Councilman Haley.
So this, this is about a $33,000 change order for engineering where the original design was deemed excessive or meeting standards that were not required. Why wasn't it foreseen that we did not need to meet these higher standards? I realize we'll see savings in the, in the construction but we're paying additional for the engineering because the engineering was done wrong?
It wasn't, I won't say it was done wrong, Your Honor, Council. It was designed to a standard that we thought was in place but during plan review, we were told because of the occupancy code requirement, we did not have to design to that standard. So there was a misinterpretation perhaps of the occupancy requirement of this building and we were told that you can design this to a less stringent code if you would like and it, it makes sense in this instance to, to realize those savings in construction
Councilman Hopkins.
Yeah, so in effect, we've, we've netted somewhere between $100,000 and $120,000 saving. Is that a fair statement?
That would be a fair statement.
And this is the line, at one point, we had actually talked about sliplining it.
We've talked about sliplining it, several occasions, we've talked about completely replacing it but yes, that's, it's the same interceptor sewer that we've been talking about.
And I think that the terminology we used here was overdesigned but at the time it was built, it was designed with anticipated growth that did not occur.
Right.
So that's what you're doing is you're planning on growth and that's why it got better than it needed to be.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Can, can we have a differentiation between occupancy and, and growth?
Yes. I mean, yeah.
I mean, you said, you said it was designed for greater occupancy.
When I'm talking-
He's saying it was designed for greater growth. What's the-
When I'm talking about occupancy, that allowed us to change the code requirement from the International Energy Code to the International Electrical Code. Had nothing to do with, the project had to happen regardless of the-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we're talking about two different things. The original sewer was designed for projected growth.
Right.
Okay? The change in occupancy he's talking about is within the building itself.
Yeah.
And not, okay.
Right.
That's, that's right. So, I get that.
The, the occupancy is whether or not we're building a little brick house or a shed to house the equipment, right?
Yes, I could agree with that.
Thank you. Reaching for that understandable example. Anything else? Thank you, Public Services Director Andrew Beamer. Okay. Do we want to amend? Do we want to discuss much more? Councilman Humphrey.
Just a quick comment that this is what our city does. I mean, this is focus on city services but it's not sexy. It's not going to make a story because there's no crazy drama to it but this is what our public wants to see us do and this is what we're doing. This is what doesn't make it to the paper. So kudos to the city because I think we realize that this happens but I hope the public realizes too that we do focus on city services and I'm sorry that that doesn't make an exciting story.
Absolutely. And I'll, I'll back up an example with that. You know, in the discussions of how we get rid of this H- hydrogen sulfide, there were discussions of just venting it. How would you like that smelling up your neighborhood? This is the ferris sulfates or the ferris, whatever they're putting in there. That's a better solution than venting it into your neighborhood. So, yes. Any more comment? Okay. Please cast your vote. We already, did we not clear that? Okay. Please cast your vote. Oh, did we ask for amendments? Did anyone want to amend anything? Okay. Go.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the urban renewal plan update. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution adopting the 2016 urban renewal plan update and authorizing submission of the same to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. City Manager McDonald, your report please.
Your Honor, the City of Casper is designated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as an entitlement committee to receive Community Development Block Grant Funds, or CDBG funds. According to federal regulations governing the CDBG program, the City of Casper is required to update its urban renewal plan every 10 years with the city's urban renewal plan currently identified as the boundary area of the Old Yellowstone District. Accordingly, staff is, staff along with members of the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee is prepared an updated urban renewal plan to, in accordance to those regulations. Liz Becker, the Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director is here to provide some more details on the plan and ask, answer any questions.
Okay. Assistant City Manager Liz Becker.
Members of council, as City Manager McDonald said, we are required to update the urban renewal plan every 10 years. Little bit of background. In 2002, an urban renewal plan was prepared by, at the time, the Casper Urban Renewal Agency, which was kind of a subset of the city. Also participating in the production of that plan was a private consultant, which was Stellar Programming, and also WLC Engineering as well as the Community Development Staff. This plan was prepared in 2002 and really established a baseline of the values, really the whole district, which again is bounded by David Street on the east to Poplar Street on the west and Collins to the south and Westford Street to the north. And so that baseline was put into place but really as a mandatory regulation with HUD, this plan allowed us to utilize our CDBG money to begin some of the program activities within the urban renewal area. I was hired in January of 2007 to kind of get the area started. So five years after this plan was started, we really began to utilize the CDBG accounts. We immediately went in with some of the spot slum and blight that existed in that area and were able to do some neighborhood cleanups with the properties and the businesses were there. We're also able to demolish some businesses. We started on some basic infrastructure upgrades and got it going. Now, timeline fast forward, 2013. So truly about six years later, we had a monitoring review by HUD and the office came up from the Denver office and sat with us through looking through how we had utilized CDBG funding and they said, "We've got a finding and we need to have you update your urban renewal plan. It's only good for 10 years." So in technicalities, it had expired in 2012. Staff was unaware of this deadline. So the finding was released in 2013 and we did respond through our city auditing responses to HUD and let them know that we would get this urban renewal plan updated. What that entailed has been to work with the County Assessor's Office, which again started in 2014. What we did was to contract again with Stellar Programming. They were able to go out to the County Assessor's database and begin to grab the data that looked at land value, market value, age of buildings, type of buildings, anything that we have in that database. We also were out there, they were grabbing floodplain information, street connectivity. And because Stellar had done it in 2002, the city staff felt that this was the same group we wanted to work with. They had all of the programming done to take that data. So that took well over a year to get that data from the assessor's database. Why? Because over the past 10, in this case 12 years, a lot of the alignments with how the assessor's office had gathered data and was posting it had changed. So the programming was far more intense than it had been in 2002. It was a true learning experience but we wanted apples to apples to be able to showcase how the area has evolved and changed over the last several years. So with that data that was delivered then to the city from Stellar in May of this year, Constance Lake, who is our GIS specialist in community development, sitting right over here, was able then to take that data and begin to put it into the graphs and charts and maps that are in the document that was presented to you. So she was able then to, again, have that apples-to-apples comparison so that we can look at how land values have changed from perhaps 50 cents a square foot to what we see now. In working with our Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee members, many of which obviously have properties down there, we know that property values have gone from 50 cents to a dollar a square foot for property to even what we've ended up as the City of Casper purchasing land close from $10, $10 a square foot up to $14 a square foot. But that is what we've actually participated in but it's not always reflected as such on the assessor's rolls. But to keep the data consistent, we have stuck with the assessor database and not with property valuations that I may know about and some of the neighborhoods may know about. We've stuck straight with the assessor's data. So again, from 2002 to the data that we ended up pulling really, which is about a 2014 timeline to what you see here, we again have seen improvements in the area, not as much as we may know personally in what property taxes have done but again, we're relying on the assessor's database. And we will do that again in another 10 years. What we have tried with this report to do is to qualify this truly as an urban renewal area, that it is an area that is in need of improvement, reinvestment. Having an urban renewal area designated in the City of Casper allows us to be qualified for various grants. We were recently awarded the EPA Brownfields Grant because we were able to designate an urban renewal area for that work and that grant will come forward, actually probably in January with the contractor. We've also obviously been able to continue to use CDBG funds to do upgrades, whether it's facade upgrades. But we've also been able to utilize other public funds in the form of the Wyoming Business Council and the monies that we have received through Wyoming Business Council Community Readiness Grant Programs for the street infrastructure. So having this designation within the Old Yellowstone District has allowed us to capitalize and more or less leverage the monies that we've put in along with some of these other public funds. To date, we have invested, and again, that would be the City of Casper and the Business Council at this point, along with the federal government with the TEAL grant that we got to do West Yellowstone back in 2010, about 14.5 million public dollars. With the- With the 14.5, you've seen the completion of West Yellowstone from David Street to the groundbreaking or ribbon cutting that we had at Poplar Street. We've also seen David Street punched through from Midwest Avenue to Collins, which we saw in 2009. We've done some infrastructure upgrades that allowed for the signal, the signal at King Boulevard, Midwest, and Poplar Street with some of those funds. And some of the other public investments have been some utility enhancements. So all in all, we with the public investment have seen the 14.5, but we've able to leverage that. And with that monies, then we've seen, and I've got the data, but I'll wait for your questions on that. But on the number of different businesses that have chosen to locate within the Old Yellowstone District, US Bank in 2010 built their new facility down there. We've seen obviously the Rockers and the Art 321 continue. Mr. Huff's Properties along West Yellowstone, we've seen Montessori School. We have seen Ad Bay and the former Coca-Cola Building transformed. A lot of reinvestment privately done. With this designation and the HUD monies, we were also able to do three economic revitalization loans, which again began in 2008. The first one being for Dosumo, which again is just to the north of the urban renewal area but qualified. We had Rising Lotus Wellness Center at Collins and David Street that we were able to do another loan on. And then we did a loan on the Montessori School. The loans have all been paid off, but we were able again to utilize CDBG money to help get these businesses that little extra gap financing. So the monies we have utilized, we've allocated, we've seen in the case with the facade grant program, probably at least a 1 to 10 investment. For every 10,000 that we've put in through, or HUD has put in, we've seen equally about a $100,000-plus investment, and in some cases, well over that for the facade upgrades that have been very commonplace. To date, and Joy Clark oversees and is our interface with HUD, we have completed 25 facade, pardon me, facade grants. So we again have utilized the urban renewal plan, the 2002, through the 2013, 14 compliance, and then now have got this one updated for another 10 years with again the comparisons for how this area has changed truly over the last 14 years. So we are on time to keep this moving forward and recognizing that we do have a 10-year requirement on this federal mandate. This plan is truly utilized to showcase with the federal government. When we execute in the Community Development Department to carry out the plans for the Old Yellowstone District, we have a master plan that was developed in 2007 by the neighborhood in about two years of public involvement in that master plan. That identifies for we in the city staff how much residential development we try to plan for in the Old Yellowstone District, how much commercial, how much office, how much open space. We also utilize that master plan to assist us with applying for the Tiger Grant in some of the street connectivity that we need from an infrastructure standpoint. So we execute to this master plan. This particular plan allows us to designate an urban renewal district for grant funding. And then as you all well know, we've got a comprehensive plan underway, which will also be through the public input. How important is the downtown and the corresponding downtown areas to the City of Casper? And again, through the comprehensive plan, we're hearing a lot more about the Old Yellowstone District in partnership with the Downtown Core. So we've got a couple of plans that we execute to, and this one has allowed us the ability to tap in and leverage some of the other public funding resources that we've used over the last 10 years, 2007.
Wow.
I'd be able, or I'd be happy hopefully answer any questions you all might have.
I can't imagine anyone having a question after how much detail you just gave us. Go ahead, Councilman Hopkins.
Not so much a question, but I'm looking at page 20. Just kind of see where we were and where we are now. 2002, we were looking at land values at one value. Today, it's something on the order of five times greater based on assessed value. Now, this was also done on 2013 values, and we have seen significant improvements since then. Probably, well, I don't know the numbers, but they're better. When you look at the land values, we have a factor of three in the assessed value that's occurred. So I commend you because apparently OYD is being pretty successful. And apparently, the folks that are working and living there think so too. So, thank you.
Your Honor, the private investment has been, and we work with those property owners on the advisory committee, they take such great pride in that neighborhood, and then they welcome other businesses in and assist them. And I think that truly has made up a wonderful neighborhood experience down there.
Right, 10 to 1.
And I know we hear from Mr. Giles so much about assessor data. And again, is it current as it can be, but is it already outdated? Perhaps, yes. And we'll hope to see another more improvement.
You never said it was just a 10-year project, but it's well on its way.
Yeah, and that private investment is like 10 to 1.
Yes, at least.
So are there any changes in the plans that are significant from the prior plan that we should know about?
Your Honor, Councilwoman Powell, I would echo what Councilman Hopkins has talked about, which is truly looking at the market values and the land values and recognizing that the investment is happening in an area that was truly deemed blighted and in need of huge investment in 2002. And so with these projects, it has begun, the numbers have begun to improve. It's not to the point yet that this is still, if you will, a non-blighted area. And no one likes the word blight, but it is an area that we do still see some industrial uses in that are unproductive. We see just vacant land. We see areas and area of cleanup. But we have seen through this comparison the improvements that we've been hoping for with more to come. But that's what I compared was 2002 with these numbers as to current date.
Just a follow-up question. And for everyone's information, we do have a work session scheduled on the 10th of January, where we will be hearing from the Old Yellowstone District Oversight Committee. And I'm sure we'll have questions for them as well. Maybe this question is more appropriate for them, but there were some targets set when this district was formed. I think it predates all of us, but Councilman Schlogger, if I remember correctly. So I wasn't involved, but how close did we come to meeting those targets?
With, Your Honor, with the targets that were set, the plan was laid out and the master plan in 2007. And again, with that identified predominantly commercial, office, and residential. And the types of units that we would like to see developed as well as the square footage of commercial space versus office space. That would be, I think, something that we will be prepared to present in January. There have been some deviations. And one of the major ones from that master plan, again, there had been the thought of a town square off of Midwest Avenue. And that is the site that was sold to the state two weeks ago. And the town square concept is now, what we are seeing is David Street Station. So we've got some flip-flop around there. And again, with the plan of the state to develop office space there, we've not yet completely seen a site planned, but we will be able to estimate how much office space that is against the targeted goal in 2007. Residential is the one area that we are now heavily targeting. So we'll be able to update you with the commercial achievements at the January work session, the projected office square footage goals. We'll be able to update you with the open space, green space, public space updates. The residential will be the target truly for the next few years, is to get the rooftops down there.
Thank you.
This may get you a little off-guard, but do you see this type of a project being implemented in other parts of the city? As a, this is a model, and now we need to move to a different neighborhood and start working along those lines.
Your Honor, that would be a council directive. Is that politically correct? Yeah. It has been a fabulous ride for the last 10 years. It's been a great area. We've had council support. And we've gone from controversy, large amounts of controversy in this concept, to having some real good times with those neighbors. And you know, there's still some skepticism out there. But you will hear in January, they're happy to be down there. And they are happy that there are regulations that help protect their investments. And you'll hear from them that those that invested in 2006 and are still going strong, that is, that's important to them. Could this be integrated into other parts of Casper? It would be probably again another two-year public input process. We wouldn't just lay it down. I would think you all would help us, and then we would get in and do the public input just as we're doing with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is going to, I think, showcase where the areas of growth and expectation are for the next 10-plus years. And I think that will give all of us an idea of how we want Casper to grow. And could an urban renewal template help with something like that? We'll see.
Yes.
When we talk on the 10th, Liz.
Yes, sir.
Will we have any discussion of the analysis of the Form Based Code and how that has played out? And the general level of satisfaction within the owners in the community? Has there been any effort to survey to see if there are some areas of the code that have been overly restrictive or burdensome?
Your Honor, that would be a question that I would expect you all to ask of the attendees. But as you well know, you all have just done a code change on the Form Based Code along Poplar Street based on neighborhood feedback to this body. You will also be brought forward in January. The Planning and Zoning Commission hears it this month, some other changes that the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee has talked with their fellow neighbors about. One related to some of the definitions of the prohibited uses, and some related to the parking requirements mandated in the Form Based Code. Councilwoman Hopkins, Councilwoman Humphrey both sit on the advisory committee that has been brought forward by that neighborhood. And so that comes to Planning and Zoning Commission in another week or so here. And then we'll come forward to you. And you will hear also related to those two changes. So yes, we are very conscious that 10 years ago when the Form Based Code was created, that there have been changes and there's been some restrictions that none of us could have imagined trying to work within. So we have taken the input from the ones that live it every day and done some different things with definitions. And again, we continue to do that even with the types of buildings that are required down there, some of the design standards. So this is truly a work in process, and we're proud of that. It's not so set in stone. And the Architecture Review Committee is very flexible, very. And again, Councilman Hopkins sits on that committee, and I'm sure we'll have some input for the rest of you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
We'd like to thank you for all of your work and all of your staff's work. We appreciate everything you did. This is not easy, putting all of this data together and all of this write-up. So thank you, ladies, we appreciate that as well.
Thank you, ladies.
Absolutely.
Labor of love.
Just one quick comment. Councilman Cathy asked about, you know, future projects. And I'd be ready to take one on tomorrow. But I think we got our hands busy right now. But it's really unique to have an area encompassing a little over 100 acres that we got a chance to have. There was a lot of open land there, so that created a lot of opportunities for people to do things. And so that's, it's great. I'm not sure we can get one that's as easy to work on as this one has been. And I'm not saying easy in the sense of easy. It's still taking a long time. But right now, we've got one of the people that was actually one of the most concerned citizens and ended up being a big promoter of the OYD. And he's on his second remodel to enhance the property that he just spent a lot of money on about five years ago. So obviously, the things are coming around. And it's looking better.
Okay. Okay. Two questions for you, but first, I do have a comment. And that is that it's mentioned that understanding your data and realizing the intricacies of these federal grants and the fact that you're working with state, city, and federal, and that all of that is actually an opportunity? Because if you have your ducks in a row, you get more money from the federal government. So I'm glad that you're keeping on that now.
I got great help.
Okay. And yes, thanks to Joy and Constance. My two questions. So the required update that we missed in 2012, that's taken care of. We've got the update that we needed to do by now?
That's tonight.
Okay. And so the other question is, and maybe you don't know the answer to this one. Is the assessor making a transition? And that's why the data is so hard to coordinate from one purpose to another?
The assessor did have some changes, Your Honor, to, and that was what has taken the last few years to align with what it looked like in 2002 when the consultant was working with it.
All right. And is there an effort to standardize process and data at some point?
Your Honor, we're optimistic with even the way that we have begun to report data and the way that we utilize the GIS models and the ESRI database that this is beneficial. And Constance's work truly at the county level with the GIS department as well as our own IT department, truly, we, the assessor sits on the GIS Advisory Committee. So there is excellent dialogue and planning in how data is accumulated, acquired, and then filed into fields that the municipalities can access through these various programming methods.
So at some point, this isn't going to be so arcane, right?
Or onerous, to use a word you like to use.
Esoteric, complicated, ridiculous, bureaucratic. Okay. Any more questions? Thank you.
You notice she got your snarky.
So no amendments? All right, let's cast our votes.
Nope.
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 Do you have no member in the public?
Nope.
Not on this. Okay, please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 10C1, a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Wyoming Highway Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. Item 10C2, a resolution approving an Atchona County Platte Voice Major Subdivision. Item 10C3, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Wyoming Game and Fish Commission and execution of a grant agreement therefore. Item 10C4, a resolution authorizing change order number two with Western Plains Landscaping LLC doing business as Three Chord Construction for the Washington Park Pool Project. Item 10C5, pardon me, a resolution authorizing change order number one with Car Coatings LLC for a time extension as part of the golf course water storage tank painting project. Item 10C6, a resolution approving an amendment to the State Small Business Credit Initiative Allocation Agreement for participating municipalities dated December 4, 2012.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Humphrey, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider minute action items. These are business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 11A1, authorizing the reappointment of Jared Stack to the Amoco Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board for a second three-year term to expire December 31st, 2019. Reject, item 11A2, rejecting all bids for the Casper Ice Arena Chiller System Replacement Project. Item 11A3, acknowledging a change in corporate ownership for Asian Fusion LLC doing business as DeSasumo located at 320 West First Street.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Powell. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred through the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members and the presentations will be limited to five minutes or less per person. Anyone wish to address council, please approach and be recognized. Welcome, Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening, your honor. Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. I just wanted to come this evening and introduce myself as Representative-elect for House District 58, which takes in part of North Casper and portion, those portions north of the city of Casper. And wanted to put a face, not a gray face, but with the name and, and I came from the county commissioners meeting and got some marching, marching orders on the, trying to hold the line on the 105 million, which I was told that I would get similar instructions here from council and our city manager. And just wanted to do that, trying to make the seven o'clock council meeting out at bar none tonight. The other thing, your honor, also was I, I feel some of our city staff and in particular our city manager and city attorney have gotten beat up as well as several council members. But in particular, our city manager and, and attorney. And I steadfastly believe in what we're doing. I think our, our staff does a remarkable job and in, in a budget crisis that we're in. And I think council has directed well the policies that, that they want our staff to carry out. And I guess it's one of those things, don't shoot the messenger. And, but my full support, what little that means, is still, is with these two gentlemen. And we can always have disagreements. And finally, I won't be here for, in town for the next meeting. My committee, committee assignments, by the way, are corporations, which I attended two weeks ago. Next week is labor and health. Unfortunately, I didn't get put on revenue, so, but.
Are, are you on the health?
And I owe somebody a, a phone call.
Yeah, cool.
So. Lastly, so that I don't get put out of order again, I, I wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and since I'll miss the next meeting, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, your honor.
Questions or comment for Representative-elect?
Mr. Mayor?
Pat Sweeney? Yeah.
Mr. Sweeney, you are correct that that $105 million figure is a very important matter to all of the cities and counties.
Yeah.
We hope, we hope you look into that and support us.
And, your honor, Councilman Powell, you know, the, the breakfast meeting a couple of weeks ago, I found very helpful and both from all the municipalities, but in particular Casper and the county commissioners. But I also, you know, the WAM recommendations, I think, really need a lot of consideration. And I'm, I'm just hoping that the legislature will take that role on the revenue side in, in really seriously and get going on it instead of kicking the can down the, the street, as our city manager aptly put it, so. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Welcome to politics, Pat.
Oh, man. It's different from that side. Not telling you anything different, so.
I will tell you that one of the perks is you get a lot of free advice.
I'm finding that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to tell a little story about you. You don't have to stand there for it, but it was like a month after the Boys and Girls, Girls Club breakfast. And I'm at Old Town Pump, it used to be Benson's. I'm fueling up. I run into Pat Sweeney, we have a little conversation. And it was Saturday morning and he, and he goes, oh, what have you, what have you done today? How was your day? And I said, well, I was at a proclamation. And Pat gives me a look and he says, did you go on for about 40 minutes? And I said, no. But that was Pat's criticism of my very long speechifying for that breakfast. So, thank you for your honesty. Anyone else wish to approach council? Please come forward, stand and be heard. Thanks.
Dennis Steensland, 533 South Washington. As you know, I've attended these for the last couple of years. So I'm basically here to thank the council. I think you've done a tremendous job. I like the fact that Compromise got a lot of work done. I basically supported everything that's taken place over the years. I think there's probably only a half a dozen or so people that can truthfully talk to this council and have a good background on what they're saying. I'm an average citizen. It's a lot easier to come in and complain after the work's been done, after the decisions have been made. It doesn't do any good because the decisions are made, the money's spent, you're going to go forward from there. I would encourage everybody to look forward and go from there. I want to especially commend Wayne Hiley. I think he got up to speed as quick as anybody can. Anyway, on another subject, I was, I think, well, the election's over and it's done. I related to Liz's presentation, a lot of the people voted because of the money that's spent, I feel now. Before that, I felt like they voted on name recognition. Like Sweeney said, the paper, the letters to the editor have pretty much covered everything that anybody could say down here. I was very disappointed in the, the new coming council members, that they never attended any of the council meetings prior to the election. I don't know how they were voted in. To me, it's the worst time to change the crew on the council. It's a, it's an easy one-year learning curve before you are constructing on the council. Anyway, bad time that way and I wish them well coming in, but I'm afraid the city's the ones that's lost out on this election. I had a lot of other things. I never write things down. But anyway, I want to thank you guys for the work you've done. I think you did a very good job.
You're welcome. Welcome, Mr. Rollins.
Good evening. Keith Vaughn, 542 South Durbin. Two quick points. One, I am against the urban plan that you just submitted. I think we wasted our money. Even though we're getting grants from the state and the federal government, I think we need to focus solely as a private enterprises over there. We need to get the government out of there. I think the one reason why that area did not work, did not boom, the rest of the city boomed in the last 10 years. That area did very little. We have to pick and choose, oh, we did this, we did that. I think because of the form-based code and all these other regulations with HUD, anytime you build anything with the governments around, you have issues you have to deal with. And I think because of that, it did not boom over there. The west side boomed. They talk about property values going up. All right, really? Compare the property values to the west side of town. Ask Murray's over there or Randy Hall, how much money they made on the west side of town. A lot more than they made on the, in the Yellowstone District. I think if we did not have all these programs, if we did not have the form-based code, we would have a lot of building over there and be like, oh, this is great. We just need to have that Kohl's store, any other stores and a few other things over there. We would have been patting ourselves on the back, we developed that area. It was not done because of government regulations. I'm not a big fan of Trump, but Trump in New York City, there's a part of town that had regulations up the wazoo. He was able to get the city council under Giuliani's administration to throw out the regulations and that area boomed by the river. He made billions off of that. But that area was disgusting before by the railroad tracks between 66th Street and 73rd Street. Awful. It is now top-notch, $5 million condo apartments over there. Beautiful. Developed it fantastically solely because he threw out regulations, only because of that, only. The financing was always there. My second point is, we're having a new council coming in, we do not have the vice mayor normally becoming mayor. That's usually the tradition as I understand it. I like to make a suggestion. In the past, voting has always, the straw vote has always been done without public knowledge of who voted for whom or even council members knowing for whom voted for whom. I think we need some transparency in this vote coming up. I think the public needs to know who voted for whom, et cetera. In the past, when a vice mayor became mayor, or if you had any issues or if you favored a person or against a person, you could always voice, voice your opinions with council members. Now we have no idea who is going to be the mayor and the vice mayor. So I think the public has no input at all and it looks like, smells like a back deal, room deal, if all of a sudden it is announced on January 3rd, when you go through the formalities of voting for the mayor, oh, by the way, so-and-so's mayor and so-and-so's vice mayor. And everyone says, this smells like backroom politics. I think we need to have it where the public knows who voted for whom or, and how it was selected, the whole process, they need transparency. I think the public at this point wants change and they would also like to have transparency. And I think that we need, you might want to consider changing that, especially since you're not following your traditional pattern anyhow. I think you might want to change that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please approach the lectern.
Your honor, I would like to, I'm Marilyn Davidson. I'd like to talk about the, I came here for the second reading of an ordinance of his own change. I either went to sleep or we didn't address that.
Oh, the second one?
Uh-huh. Do we, do we address those or not?
No, you can, but with the second readings, we don't necessarily have the, the public hearing where there's comments to that specific issue.
All right. I just didn't want.
So after the first one, there's the public hearing, but then the second, the third, unless you want to pull it off again and discuss it more.
Okay, I just didn't.
That's, that's what happens.
All right. Never done this before. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't overlooked and we were missing the second reading. Okay. All right. Sorry, your honor.
Thank you. Did, did you want to comment on it?
I don't have any more comments than I did in the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please approach and be heard.
How's it going, your honor? Councilman? My name is Jacob Juarez. I live at 2820 Saratoga. I'm here for a voice for the city of Casper about Hogedon ski area. I apologize, I work at Verizon Wireless, so all my notes are on my phone. I have a few key points that I wanted to go over. I have purchased a season pass for the past 10 years, so I am very familiar with the area. I've familiar, I've been a, a very consistent customer. So a few points that I have, I've done a lot of research on all the ski areas surrounding. The prices, at first, I did send all of you a letter. I'm not sure if everybody got that and read that or not. So one of my, my first main point was the prices that they're too high. So after doing my research, I found out that, you know, the prices are definitely very comparable to a lot of others. After researching a little bit more, giving our location in the middle of Wyoming, you know, we're not next to a main mountain range, any forest area. So a lot of the other ski areas actually have a tremendous amount, more amount of snow that actually falls every year. So taking that into place, also, a lot of those ski areas aren't shut down two days a week. So all of these things going into place, it kind of balanced it a little bit for me, just seeing where the price is, considering that the other ski areas are also open for about a month longer on average. So there's a lot of time there that Hogedon isn't actually open. The season is actually a little bit shorter, so the price was there. Going a little bit further there, I kind of realized that my main points were a little bit skewed. I was kind of sidetracked on the fact that MIPs, things like this alcohol problem within Casper for youth, there's not a lot of positive things for the youth to do unless you're going to a traditional sport, football, basketball, soccer, things of that. So a, a lot of the youth just aren't in that. I love sports personally myself, but some people just, it's not for them. So I think when you run into a wall, when you're not actually involved in a traditional sport, the rate of MIPs, I don't know the exact numbers, I didn't do the research on that, but I know it's definitely significantly high. It's, it's not a good number. I wouldn't, wouldn't brag about that at all. So I think that if we make attempts to change what is going on at Hogedon, maybe give different options, not necessarily change the price down, because I realize it, it costs a lot of money. And I would also like to add that we are appreciative of everything that you guys are doing for Hogedon. The new buildings, I know you guys are working on the lift, things like this. Concessions, all of those things don't go unrecognized. We do appreciate those and it looks really good up there. It definitely does. So I did some research. I found at Loveland Ski Area, it's located in Colorado, they do a bunch of different, different packages. So for example, they have a, if a, a child does three days lessons, three-day ski or snowboard lessons, he gets a free season pass. So they were charging anywhere from $340 to $369 for these packages. And you can do a packages, you can do a package with an adult and your children. You can do possibly a three-adult package, so where you can come and do lessons. All these different package deals where you can either maybe get a free season pass after you've already spent the money or get a discounted season pass, things like that, that would possibly bring in more, just more citizens of Casper all around and then also the youth. So just trying to get more positive activity going on for the youth that aren't involved, you know, traveling in different cities, playing sports, things like that. So one more main point that I had was the train park as well. The train park, I know, has been something that's been a struggle. Of course, the snowfall comes in to play there, definitely. We don't have a train park crew. So all, the train park crew, where it's going to go, how much it's going to cost to maintain, maintain, all of these things are going to go in line with that. But I do believe that a train park, ski board, uh, snowboarders and skiers alike could both benefit from that. And I think that Hogedon could actually pull in a lot more revenue if you had those, all of these different things in line as well. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on these different things. I, like I said, I work at Verizon Wireless, so I get to talk to the citizens of Casper on a daily basis and this is one of my passions. So I bring this up on a regular basis and the majority of the people. So I bring this up on a regular basis and the majority of the people, almost, I would put about 100% of the people that I talk to agree with most of these points. I obviously don't get a preach to them, but I think they're very valid points. I think it could help the whole community. I think it actually bringing, bring in money towards Hogedon as well. So I think it could kind of benefit everybody.
Okay. Questions or comments for Mr. Juarez?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We're going to start with Vice Mayor Kathy and if he says anything that you were going to say, let me know.
First of all, have you bothered to talk to the leisure services board at all?
I have not. I, this is my first city council meeting. I.
This is my whole point. I don't believe you'd even talked to any of the council members up here before you come here. It would have been nice to have called one of us. We could have gone over some of the things in your letter. You could have potentially brought these concerns to the leisure services board who could have looked at those through the summer and maybe we would have had a different policy by now. As far as the prices for the season passes, the, the numbers generated from season passes do not indicate that the prices are hurting revenue generation. And the early bird, well, first of all, early bird discount is still in effect as of 12, as of, it just ended. But in '08, I'm sorry, in '07, we generated $153,588. In '08, it dropped to 149. This year, we're at $159,000. So we have actually generated more revenue from our early bird season passes this year than we have any year in the past three years. So that part of it is, there's some issues there. Something else is that normally we take recommendations from the leisure services board as far as rate setting is concerned. In the past, we have actually set rates throughout the year on all leisure services. Pools, ice arena, rec center, Hogedon at various times throughout the year. Something that is planned, and I hope it doesn't change with the new council, but something that is planned for this coming year is that basically here in the January, February, March arena, we are planning on evaluating all of those rates to see if they should be actually rate-based based on other areas or because this is public money, should they be more as a provision of services to the, to the members of the community? So that will be being addressed at that point. And part of the reason this is coming about is in the past, we have always set up the budget in June and then we're still making rate changes in July and August. Well, there's no way then of figuring that into the budget. So our whole rate setting and budget process was planned to be changed this year to get all of those rates in line with where council, leisure services board and public input felt that they should be, which is a policy decision, which is what the nine people sitting here with input from leisure services board is supposed to be doing. Then once those rates are set, those can be then incorporated into the budget so that it all rolls together in a smooth process. So that's kind of where we are to, to let you know that those things are being considered.
Okay.
Okay?
I would like to add, I apologize that I came a little misinformed. I did try to call you guys and I was told that emailing you was the best way if you guys wanted to talk to me, that I was, I didn't know if I should email you guys or not. I should have directed.
Phone number's on the website.
Yeah, whoever I talked.
28 more days.
Okay, gotcha. I mean, I work for Verizon. I should probably know how to.
Yeah, you can get it anywhere now.
Yeah, I should probably know it. Thank you very much.
You bet. But, but we do appreciate, and we do appreciate citizen input. And as a matter of fact, Councilman Powell is actually the liaison between council and the leisure services board.
Okay, perfect.
There's, there's a very good contact through council to the board to get things set up with your citizens group to bring some of those plans forward.
Okay, perfect.
And that'd be great.
Thank you, Councilman Kathy.
You bet.
And Councilman Pacheco wants.
Just real quick, and I want Councilman Powell, he's going to talk, he's on leisure. Thank you for coming. This is a great place to start.
Thank you.
And, and this place should be a place that's welcoming and it will be. This place is a place for citizens to be able to come here and for you to know that you can come and speak to us. We may not always agree with everything that's being said, but we thank you for coming and being here for that. You don't know the process. That's okay. What is the process, right? But here's the thing. The point of it is that this is, this is a place for the citizens and to come and talk to us and be able to say those things. So I wanted to make sure you know that. And Charlie's going to be able to, or Councilman Powell will be able to talk to you about the leisure board. But there is the thing, how we can come together and be able to say, you know what, guys, there's something not working here. There's something not happening. We want to be able to work together. So thank you for coming and talking to us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilman Powell.
I'll echo that. Thank you, Councilman Pacheco. In my remarks, Jake, I will try to overlook that back in seventh grade, when you were the quarterback of the Dean Morgan football team and my son was the tailback and they ran an option, you not once lateral to my son. Every time you turned and ran into the middle of the line, he never touched the ball the entire season. I guess maybe I'm not going to take me over that.
This, this is your chance, Charlie. Go get them. I deserved that.
And I think it's very important for you to be here because one of the things I think we should note is it wasn't that long ago that we had a lot of conflict between snowboarders, snowboarders and skiers up at Hogedon. And there were skiers who did not think it was a safe place because people did not follow ski etiquette. And things have changed up there and we don't get those complaints anymore. And, but the people, the younger people who snowboard need to have a voice because the people who tend to sit on committees and make plans are people in our age group. And so it's important for someone like yourself to come forward and, and speak for the snowboarders and the younger people, users of the mountain. And, and I think we need to be open to other suggestions like the ones that you've given and consider those. And I know terrain parks, you know, there's concerns about the numbers of injuries and the staffing that it requires, et cetera. But, but it has to be an inviting place for everybody because everybody's paying for it. The problem we have with the rates, of course, is we're all, we're running Hogedon at a significant subsidy already. And that's, that's all very controversial. There are people in this town who think that there should be no subsidy for Hogedon. And yet it is an amenity that has great value to the community and, and, but, but we have to keep that in check. So that's really the issue with the, with the passes. Your points are, are good that, you know, it's an unpredictable business when we get snow and we've had years where people have paid for a snow pass and, or skiing pass and it's pretty hard to say they got a good deal by the end of the year. There are other years where it was a great deal. But I think, I would encourage you to stay involved and I, and I, and we do have a group called the Friends of Hogedon, which is a group of users that are, that, that, one of the things they're doing is trying to raise money to add to some of the amenities so that the skiers have a little more skin in the game than the rest of us that don't downhill ski. But that group might also take some input on, on ways to better utilize the hill. And I know the terrain park has been a discussion that's gone on for years about how to do that, where to do that, how to do it safely. It's, it's not something that's been completely forgotten. It's just, the, the whole hill is in transition. So, so thanks for coming forward and, and stay involved and, and appreciate you being a voice, a voice for that user group.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please approach and be recognized. Welcome.
My name's Shannon Neely and I live at 2382 Sagewood Avenue. Mayor and city council members, I would like to take a minute to thank you for your service of the city of Casper. We may not all have agreed with some of the decisions you made, but we know that the best interest of Casper is what you had in your hearts. Some of you have lost your seat in this prior election, election and I totally understand the bitterness and disappointment you may have in your hearts. I was in two very disappointing situations also. One being I lost my job Thursday. Another situation was an election that didn't come out like I would have liked it to. In both situations, I gave 100% and it was easy to become bitter and disheartened about something that you put your whole heart and effort into. But we have to realize that this is not about me or you, but about God's plan for us. In John 13:7, Jesus replied, "You don't understand now what I'm doing, but someday you will." And in Jeremiah 29:11, "I know the plan I have for you, the plan to prosper you and not harm you, plan to give you hope and give you a future." Sometimes God's blessings are not in what he gives us, but in what he takes away. And in Romans 8:28, God promises to make something good out of the storm that brings devastation to our lives. Remember, when you are down to nothing, God is up to something. So look up, smile and trust. My good friend Dell, my other friend Dottie and my beautiful wife Twala would all like to give you a gift to thank you for your dedication and service you've given the city of Casper this past year.
Thank you.
Wow. Wow.
Is this okay?
Thank you.
Is this, is this, is this legal?
As long as it's not alcohol.
As it's under $250.
I can guarantee you it's not alcohol and it's less than $150.
Merry Christmas to all of you and happy holidays.
And thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I see shortbread cookies.
Somebody's missing one someplace.
Oh, this is for Scott.
No, he's got.
Okay. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to address council? Please approach the lectern. Really? We're going to end it on a good note. Nice. Okay, this is the time when we go around the table. Please begin, Councilman Powell.
Thank you, your honor. Mr. Sweeney mentioned earlier that the legislature will be wrestling, obviously, with some very difficult budgetary challenges and funding of, of cities and counties is one of the challenges that they will face. And, and how the city is funded is a very complicated business. But I guess a short description of it is that we rely very heavily on state support. We have no taxing authority. And that said, as the sales tax revenues go up and down, so too does the state's availability to support the operations of cities and counties. I am on the Board of the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, which is a group of 99 cities and towns, all of which come together to meet and provide training to members on various aspects of serving on city councils and serving in mayoral positions, et cetera. But the, the group also works with the legislature to find out, to communicate with them, not only how much money does it take to run a city, but how should that money be divided amongst the 99 municipalities, all of which have very different needs based on the size of their population. We met with Governor Mead yesterday to talk about some of those challenges and I'm pleased to report that the governor remains a very strong supporter of the municipalities and counties and has put into his budget a, the, a, a funding figure that will, it will not provide any, it will be a sparse amount, but a doable amount for the cities to function. In the last biennium, the cities and counties took a 40% cut in the state budget by basically giving up on what's called consensus funding for, for infrastructure projects, but maintained a level of funding for what's called over-the-cap funding and it would take far too much time to explain those terms this evening. But the bottom line is that the governor has found a way to put that in his budget. And, and so we, and we, and we believe we will be able to operate with that amount of funding even though our own sales tax revenues are, are going down and have sort of settled at a lower level. We are, to remind people who follow this, we are on a glide path to reduce our overall financial obligations and our budget to a lower level and reduce our staffing levels to a level that we can adequately support. But having the governor's support at this level is really critical. And with all of the turnover in the legislature, we will hopefully be a strong voice to those newer members of the legislature like Mr. Sweeney and be able to explain to them what will happen if some of that money is cut because essential services will certainly be affected if that takes place. So, but the good news again is that the governor's a big supporter. I also want to mention that one of the things that's very important to the governor right now is this endowed program, which he believes is, is going to give us some long-term solutions to our, our, the challenge of diversifying our economy, which by the way, you can trace documents back about 60 years. People saying, we need to diversify our economy, if not longer. And the governor's plan, I think, is a good one. And it's, it's a plan that works on not just trying to recruit businesses, but working on our educational system and developing more industrial parks. But the governor also understands the things that we have talked about, which is, which involve that, that economic development requires communities to continue to work on being more livable, more enjoyable and more satisfying for the, the, the citizens of those communities. And that economic development will not happen if we don't continue to work on making this a more attractive place to live. And that has been a primary focus of my work on the council and I think it should continue to be a priority even though it's difficult to work on those things in these challenging times. But the basic news is good news. The governor's in our corner and he's got a budget that we think, that we looked at and said, that looks like a thoughtful way to go about it and I hope the legislature agrees. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Humphrey.
Thank you. Thank you guys for bringing goodies for all of us. That was very kind and thoughtful. So I appreciate it very much. You're very well spoken. You did a wonderful job. You researched, you investigated, you brought solutions. Do you have an interest in being more of an advocate for Hogedon? Do you want to be connected to the group? Okay. I don't know how we can make that happen, but if you guys can connect somehow so that, that he can be a part of that, I think you're a strong advocate and you did a great job. So thanks for coming. The committee to hire our city judges met and we do have a recommendation to move forward to the council. I don't think the memo is out to council yet, though. Is that right? I didn't miss that, did I? Pretty sure I didn't. So I, I'm not going to actually do an announcement kind of like we talked, but we do have something to bring forward to you and we did interview judges. It was an honor to interview all of the people. They were very qualified and they all had something wonderful to add. But we'll have a name to bring forward here in the very near future. A big thank you to city staff, our city leadership. I think we don't say it enough how much you guys mean to us and how hard you work. It's easy to overlook your dedication and all the things you do and all the things you give up because we don't see it every day. And then I feel like you guys kind of get kicked once in a while when you don't deserve it at all. So thank you. I can't speak for all of council, but you guys are amazing. I love working with you every single day and I support you in everything you do and I hope that things will get a little bit smoother and easier and just know how much you guys are truly loved. So thank you for everything you do.
Councilman Pacheco.
So I'm just going to, really quick, Jacob, too. I just wanted to kind of echo exactly, I was going to say the same thing, what Keneen had said, getting you involved. And so a part of, when I got involved and wanting to be involved in politics or be involved in government, I could sit on the sideline and complain and I could sit and I could do those things. But when I actually put my money where my mouth was and get involved and actually run for office and take the shots, get hit, stand up for what you believe in even though you know you're going to get ridiculed for those things, that's really where it happens at. And so as a young person like yourself, coming in and standing up and saying that takes a lot of guts to be able to do that. And I think that's really what epitomizes what it means to get active and get involved in the community. And there's many ways to do that and being active and involved are kind of like what Keneen had said about you getting involved with that and being an advocate. And I think council members can often forget when somebody comes up. to us," or "It's not important to me." So, sometimes I think as council members, including myself, I'll speak for myself, we have to step back, and we have to realize the, the things that are important in your lives as government official, uh, for you, um, we have to really realize that that's important. And so, thank you for coming and doing that. And anybody that comes up here, um, you know, there's many people that come up here that we don't agree with, or even make me angry when they come up here and talk, but it's what they believe in, they're passionate about. So, keep that up, and I hope you get involved in. And, um, if I can do anything to help with that, let me know. Yep.
Councilman Hiley.
So, I was struck that tonight, we had two occasions where people attended the meeting and thought there was gonna be an opportunity to speak and, 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 and didn't, um, didn't have that opportunity because of how our, our rules and procedures go. Uh, but, but more, more stunning was that I, who am normally well-prepared, was also surprised that there wasn't an opportunity to, um, have an abstention or nay vote on the consent resolutions, uh, when there isn't opportunity for us to abstain or have nay votes on consent minutes and, and other matters. So...
I think it was accidentally left out.
Well, it's certainly not in the script, and... Right. And there was actually, you know, one, one item which I would have spoken, or, or I knew I wouldn't have an opportunity to speak against, but, but may have voted a nay vote on. So, it's, it's kind of curious that, um, in, in the scripting and the following of all our procedures, not just the citizens, but, but even the councilmen sometimes get tripped up with, uh, with things. Um, besides that, I've been silent since the election, and I just wanted to, uh, to share this. Um, yeah, I was disappointed, but not bitterly disappointed with the results, and that's probably because I spent my discretionary money this year on trying to get elected rather than, uh, on a Hogadon season pass, which I've had for, you know, virtually. So, now I don't get to ski, and I don't get to sit up here and pont, and pontificate, and that, that's kinda sad. But, uh, when one door closes, another opens, and, and, you know, I've, I've certainly been, uh, very thankful for the, the support that I did receive from, from the members of the public and, and friends and, and others who just thought, um, you know, that this result was something that they wished would be different. Nevertheless, I'm gonna continue to support the incoming members, and I wish them very well. This is a difficult job. It does take a lot of preparation to do it well, and, uh, I will be there to help you prepare if you need it. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
I just thank everybody for coming up and speaking tonight, and thank you, guys, for the gifts. It was real thoughtful. Uh, I don't have a whole lot. I was on the municipal court board that was, that took part in the interviews of the candidates for the, uh, upcoming opening for municipal court judge. Um, and then, my next two meetings, I have a convention and visitors bureau meeting next week, and then, regional water, um, board meeting the week after. So, I have nothing else to report other than that.
Vice Mayor Kathy.
Uh, first of all, I'll start off with, uh, as part of Generation Casper, the long-range plan, that's kind of the, the thing that I've always tried to bring to the public. There will be another public workshop this coming Thursday night, the eighth, from six to seven-thirty here at City Hall, and it will be to go over transportation. And the little memo that I was given says the participants will be asked to give input on streets, trails, pathways, and intersections related to safety, connectivity, and alternate transportation. Ideas such as rethinking how we design our streets, parking and access to local businesses, feasibility of roundabouts, and where to add bicycle infrastructure, for example, will be explored. So, that's kind of the, the prep for it. The hook is free hot chocolate and snacks. So, please get out and come, okay? We are really seriously interested in public input. We talk about public input up here all the time. I've been to four of these different workshops that have been throughout, and I wanna say the most we've ever had's twenty people. And this is a town of sixty thousand. We oughta be able to fill this building up with input from people. We would love to have people that have the passion, as this young gentleman did, about Hogadon, about our city, and about our transportation plan. Those are the things that we're interested in. And by the way, I do appreciate you coming up. It was the process more than anything. Um, and we do have to have some type, as, as from being in business and in other things, when you do have an idea, you don't bypass your supervisor and go to the president. You start off there, and a phone call or something like that would've been great. We could've maybe taken care of that, and with a simple phone call, and got you in touch with the right people. So, no, but we do appreciate the input, and we do thank you. And I did spend some of my discretionary money and bought a season pass, got the early bird discount, and now that after the third of January, I won't be on council, I'm gonna have a bunch of time to go enjoy it. So, so, thank you. But yes, Hogadon is a great place, and, uh, something that is of concern about the, the terrain park is that we averaged an accident a week that came to ski patrol in the terrain park. And while I was on ski patrol up there, some of those were some pretty horrific accidents. And, uh, so trying to get that designed and put into place, uh, is really a big thing for, from a public safety standpoint. But I do appreciate, um, yeah, the borders need a place to go as well. So, I, I thank you for that.
That's it. Thank you. Um, I gave some welcoming remarks at the post office, downtown post office. If you've noticed, they've done, done some renovating inside that public building, that federal building next to the post office. And in the actual post office now is a consolidated office of the Small Business Administration and the Housing and Urban Development Administration. So, two federal agencies, because they're working with Senators Enzi and Barasso and Representative Lummis, they, they actually worked on this project to consolidate, and if you can shrink the size of your footprint, this initiative to save money, you can have two offices in one new renovated building. It looks, I don't know, it's not art deco, it's more like commercial deco. I don't know if there's a name for this kind of architecture, but it's really nice. I gave welcoming comments. Um, there were all kinds of big wigs from the federal government there, including, you know, the district managers for those federal agencies, and it was, it was good. And people liked my comments, and me representing the city of Casper. Okay. Next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held at four-thirty PM Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty sixteen, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at six PM Tuesday, December twentieth, in the council chambers. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Please cast your vote. And please... That's it. Record the vote.
All members voting aye. Motion passes.